Good evening. Good evening, I'd like to call this June 20th Business Meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, may we have a roll call?
President Udwin?
He's absent, excuse the absence.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Sampson?
Present.
Ms. Wiganey?
Present.
Dr. Pickett?
She has an excused absence as well.
Ms. Reynard?
Present.
Mr. Lacy?
Here.
Here.
Five present.
We now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go, can you guys hear us out there?
No.
It's kind of shaky, is that better?
Hello.
Thank you, appreciate it. Alright, first we have a special presentation, Dr. Lally, could you introduce the presentation, please?
Our presentation tonight is a review of the budget for purchasing and operations. Dr. Lawrence and his team will be presenting.
District Board Members, Dr. Lawrence, Dr. Lally, and Treasurer Aberha. My name is Terry Allen, I am the Director of Purchasing Services, and I will be giving you the budget update for purchasing. The purchasing mission statement is to optimize the value of goods and services acquired by the district while maintaining compliance with governing agencies and utilizing industry best practices. In order to do that, purchasing identifies, qualifies, and contracts with vendors through informal, informal competition. We facilitate timely delivery of quality goods to classrooms and operational departments. We solicit for adequate competition for fair and reasonable pricing, and we provide outreach, education, and opportunities to all interested vendors, especially local and diverse suppliers. Our purchasing team currently consists of myself and Amy McComas, and we are happy to say that both of us have been certified as public purchasing officers. This distinction is given to us by the Universal Public Procurement Certification Council, which is a 40-year-old independent certifying agency operating in eight countries, 10 provinces and territories in Canada, and 52 states in the US. The agency offers certifications for certified professional purchasing buyers and the certified public procurement officer. To date, there are 11,000 CPPBs, but there are only 3,500 CPPOs for which the district has two in employment, and we are proud of that. This certification demonstrates both the comprehensive mastery of public procurement and this office's commitment to staying abreast of purchasing trends, policy procedures, and industry best practices. As you will see in the next slide when we give our ask for this year's budget, our operating budget is small in comparison to what you would hear from my counterpart Rick Raifert or others that have presented previously. However, we felt it important to note that almost without exception, the majority of the $256 million appropriated for district purchase services, supplies, materials, and capital outlay come through the purchasing department for various degrees of vetting, processing, bidding, negotiating, or follow-up. The list of projects that are being shared are given to demonstrate the diversity of disciplines handled by purchasing on a daily basis. Included are projects from our operations, transportation, HR, treasurer, information technology, and athletics departments. In 2023, this office managed nearly 5,000 procurements, which included the approximately 15 formal solicitations and major projects. We also dispensed 1,500 follow-up and/or expedite requests. The latter could not have been done without the help of a long-term sub Angela Jones and Paige Backford, who I just want to give a shout-out to for their help. And now for our ask. For fiscal year '24, purchasing is requesting $128,886. This funding will be used to, for annual memberships, renewal fees, webinars, forums, and conferences for compliance, the training for our purchasing staff, as well as our internal customers and vendors, classified advertising for formal solicitations, which is about 15% of our budget, and then general office supplies and equipment for our department, and also outreach meetings. On this final slide, we just wanted to give you a little bit more detail about those spins. We utilize it for GovSpin, which is a database that we use to research and a quoting tool. Also Bonfire, which is an e-procurement software system that we use for formal solicitations. We are a part of the National Institute of Government Purchasing, the State of Ohio DAS Co-op, and the Miami Valley Chapter Ohio Association of School Business Officials, and also the Ohio Minority Supplier Development Council. The webinars that we will attend or provide will study about trends and best practices. Include, it are the NIGP Annual Forum, our Power School, which is our financial system B+, updates and consulting to keep on trend and to keep efficient in the work that we do for the district. Also a federal procurement training that we did a couple of years ago, we were unable to do it this year. And the Council of Great City Schools Annual CFO and Procurement Conference. And the balance of that, as we said, will go to Dayton Daily News and Dayton Business Journal to publish our advertisements, then for general supplies and departments and meeting and technical equipment. It is with great anticipation that, we've been told that we will get two additional people, so most of that will be used for training the two new staff members. At this time, we will entertain any questions.
Thank you, appreciate your presentation. Are there any questions from any member of the board? Ms. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First, let me say thank you for this presentation. I do have one question from Slide 4. Can you tell me what outreach meetings are as relates to purchase services?
So we held only one outreach meeting this year, and it is for the district's community inclusion program. It is to identify and help our diverse supplier base to get contract opportunities. So they come in to learn about what the district has in terms of opportunities, how our processes work, and to meet some of our prime contractors for partnering opportunities.
Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson. I had a couple of questions. Well, number one, and a follow-up from that with those outreach meetings. In your estimation, what are... What are some of the hurdles that come to you guys from some of our minority businesses in these outreach sessions? Or has there been any expressed to you guys about some of the things that those communities, when we talk about minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses getting involved? Have they lifted up any issues to you guys?
Yes, they have, and one of the main things that they've identified is our process. They're not familiar with the process, and so what we did at the last meeting is that we posted our front-end documents for construction opportunities, because a lot of times vendors think it'd be because the documentation appears to be so large that they can't get through it. And so what we tried to do is to instruct them, most of that documentation stays the same, so if they familiarize themselves with that information, then all they have to do is worry about the scope of the project. Also, some of the things they express have to do with the timing. We are on fast track for a lot of our major projects, which does not give them an opportunity to respond from the timelines that are required, so those are the things that we are most...
Okay, and then with that, so you said there was one meeting this past school year. Do you guys have plans to increase the number of meetings next year?
Yes, sir. Basically with two people on our team is very hard, but we plan to do this at least quarterly. We've also spoken to our PIO office about how to get information out to targeted audience a little bit quicker, so that they are aware of our projects.
Okay, and you spoke to adding one staff. Currently, right now, what are some of the capacity issues that you guys face with the current staffing level? And how do you think those will be addressed, not only with that situation that you just spoke on, but some of the other issues that you may see? Do you think that'll be adequately addressed, or will there still be some capacity needs?
You're asking about the additional staff members, I'm sorry, Ms...
Right, with added staff, how will that help with the capacity to be able to carry out the work of the procurement office?
Yeah, we plan to be more strategic about the things that we do and stop being as reactive as we are to sit in on meetings prior to some of the engagements in these large projects, so that we can understand what opportunities are coming up, to work with some of our partners such as the MacBapp Office, and I know that they are moving, and with Belinda Stinson and her group at the Chamber of Commerce, so that we are aware of what diverse suppliers are out there, who's certified, what opportunities they have the capacity for, and then to try to meet those needs and give them advance notice.
Thank you, I appreciate that. There are no other questions, then we'll be done. Appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice President Smith, Superintendent Lally, Treasurer, and Board Members. I'm Rick Raifert, Operations, Senior Executive Director. Can you hear me okay? Hear me okay? Okay, great. So I'm going to the boring part first, I'm gonna give a little history about me in Dayton. So this is a little history about me, I'm an ex-marine, of course, and been working for 39 years since I got out of the Marine Corps. 30 of those years have actually been in Dayton, Ohio. So I was Chief of Security, you can read some of these. Started in, as a carpenter, carpet installer, Southwestern Construction, a hog carrier, been a groundskeeper for Ohio State University, was a maintenance tech for Motel 6, a maintenance tech for Manco Real Estate, and a maintenance tech for Tord Independent, I mean, a maintenance coordinator for Tord Independence. Like I said, I've been working for the district for 17 years and 10 months, so almost 18 years now. Also, I worked for the city of Dayton for nine years as a conservation specialist and a housing inspector. I attended Columbus Business University for computer programming, NRI schools for property inspection, Sinclair Community College for property management, Professional Development Institute for heating and air, Northwest Energy Efficiency Council for certification as being a building operator. I also carry the UST Class A and B operator for the gas pumps that the bus drivers get the gas from. They have to have certain inspections, probably about, and I'll show you later on in the slide how many inspections they had to have a year. I also volunteered as a house captain for Christmas and April. I don't know if you remember Christmas and April, they changed the name to Rebuilding Together, and that's when we find, that's when we go to a house in April and fix up somebody's house in the community. I had the honor road students from Chaminade Julian one year, and then also the executives from Reynolds &amp; Reynolds one year to fix the house up. I also was a Little League football coach for the Wolf Pack. I fostered, me and my wife, of course, we fostered four families, and then we also have raised over 100 kids in our front room from newborn till they got to school age. So, and I got a few awards too, actually I got three awards here for outstanding, what was it for, outstanding employee. Got some awards at the city of Dayton too for outstanding employee. So this is a little bit about me, in case nobody wants to know. So we'll get to the operations stuff. So our operations staff are year-round employees. They consist of distribution, mailroom, custodial, grounds, maintenance, compliance, and duplication. And of course, the ones with the asterisks beside them, those are 24-hour, 24/7 employees. Those employees can get called at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning, all through the night, all through the day. So depends what the emergency is. Here's our projected staffing for operations. Distribution center, we currently have 11. We're asking for 10 more employees, I mean, 10, yeah, 10 next year, and that's a reduction of one employee. Mail and duplication, that stays the same, no change there. Custodial, we have 114. We're asking for an increase to 116, and actually, we're only getting really one employee. We moved a director out of maintenance and put them in operations where they should be at with the custodians. So we did this swap there. We currently had a chief position that's not being filled, so that's another position that's available. So we have a net loss of one position for operations. Next is the appropriations, and I kind of did a analysis of the year, starting back from 2018. I usually do a five-year analysis when I try to ask for my next year's budget to see where we're trending, if we're trending up, we're trending down, and by what percentage. So I have each department in here, and what the ask is for, and I got here in the red, what the red means is that amount was either carried over or we actually had POs or PRs, POs that we put in for that fiscal year. So that could be two different numbers there. The blue indicates what we're gaining or what we won't have. So for instance, distribution, we asked for, had 72,000 last year. We're asking for 61 this year, so that's a reduction of 11,000. So mailroom, a reduction of 8,278. Custodial addition, we're asking for more money, about $300,000 in custodial. Grounds, they're asking for extra $278.88. Maintenance, that is our general fund, we're reducing our general fund by $166,000. Our capital fund, our 003 fund, we're asking for another $5 million in that fund. The maintenance fund, which is the 034 fund, we're gonna reduce that by almost $1 million from last year. Compliance, that's going up by $47,000 and 385.17. Duplication is included in the mailroom budget. And then operations is the last one, and that's decreasing also by $30,000. This was our ESER funds last year, our ESER 2 funds. We were appropriated a little over $4 million, and these are the projects that we use that money for. And then so far, we've got $16 million appropriated for ESER 3, and that's the project that we're using for transportation. There's other projects too, we just haven't got them finalized yet. So 2024 for ESER 3 funds. We're asking for $63 million for ESER Fund, and here's the projects that it's going to support. And most of it's BAS upgrades for building automation systems, that's pretty expensive, but our systems are antiquated, they need to be replaced, we're way behind in technology there, so... Distribution, duplication mail, logistical service is ran by Dural Glass, he's the logistics coordinator. They're supported by eight truck drivers and three stock employees, a duplicating clerk, a mail clerk, and assistant asset manager. The office is responsible for receipt of goods, distribution of building, to building reciprocience, processing, delivery, and mail, delivery of meals to DPS and non-DPS sites, processing and delivering of textbooks and supplemental materials, and fulfillment of duplication requests. The one asset manager we have is responsible for monitoring custodial supply, disposal of unused property, obsolete, unreparable district property, and the management of PPE supply. The logistics are also responsible for delivery of milk to 25 schools daily, and milk and meals to nine daycare centers. Custodial, custodial services is managed by Tiffany Powell, Lenny Allen, and Coordinator Katina Taylor. Custodial cares for, the custodians care for about 2.6 million square feet, and that's divided by 111 full-time employees, so that's approximately 23,400 square feet per custodian. They assist the staff during lunch period, keeping outside of the building free from debris, assist in special school events, prepare for events from outside organizations, operate and maintain various type of equipment. And this came from ODA website to kind of give you a gauge where we're at with custodians. We're pretty much at Level 3 according to the square footage that they claim. Grounds Department is managed by Rob Hunter and Coordinator Jim Keaton. They cut approximately 700 acres per week. They're responsible for snow removal, mowing flower beds, maintaining athletic fields, maintaining parking lots, including pothole repair and tree cutting. Maintenance skilled trades is managed by Drew Mastrino and assisted by Zekia Liggins. They're responsible for plumbing, HVAC, carpentry, locksmith, painting, plastering, glazing, electricians, electronics, sheet metal, and roofing. From 6122 to 6123, they were, there were 7,727 work orders created, and out of those, 7,272 were completed. Compliance directors manage, compliance is managed by Rob Hunter. He's responsible for monitoring all of the backflows, fire inspections, bleaching inspections, boiler inspections, elevators, elevator recall tests, elevator service log, emergency generator inspection, fire system tests, and fire and door inspection. And lastly, well, I'm also the UST operator for A and B. That responsibility is making sure that we are, we're registered with Buster annually. We have, our certificates are in place, our financial responsibilities is in place, providing training for, provide training in certified C operators, do walkthrough inspections, do 12-month release detection, and automatic tank gauge certificate, test certificate. And then last, annual pressure piping and leak detection. So those are required, some of those are required every three years, and some of those are required annually. Questions? I know that was a lot, so...
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for all of that information. I appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Lacy?
The BAS upgrades, what does BAS stand for?
Building Automation System.
Building...
Building Automation System.
Automation System.
Building Automation System, I'm sorry.
So could you explain that a little bit more?
I'll let Drew explain it, because he manages that part.
The BAS guy can...
One of them. Good evening. BAS, so Building Automation, it includes all of the chiller systems, pretty much your HVAC system, your boilers, and then the automation system that actually runs the buildings remotely. So pretty much, all of our technicians, they do the hands-on stuff with the boilers, chillers, water pipes, hot water pipes, and then there's an automation system that actually coordinates all that. So this building we're in right now, if we wanted to run at 68 degrees, there's sensors that kick on and kick off when it is needed.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any other questions? Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you for the presentation, and Mr. Raifert, your introduction was the best part. So I just, it wasn't boring, I want you to know that was the best part. As relates to, I need, I'm trying to gain some understanding about Slide 6 and 7. Slide 6, ESER 2, it talks about appropriation, expenditure, encumbrances, and balance. So are you saying, right now, there's still 1.4 million in ESER 2 funds that need to be spent by September of this year?
No, I can get you the updated version, because I've done this at the beginning of June, so...
Got it.
There's been changes since then, yeah, so I'll get you the updated.
So if you can get us updated, that would be greatly appreciated.
I can.
And then, Board Member Lacy asked a question about ESER Fund 3, and the total estimated cost is 63 mil? So my question would be, I see Jackson, Mound Street, Phase 2, 10 schools, Phase 3, 7 schools. If you could give us the breakdown of what schools these are and the cost per building, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yes, yes, we have that.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, any other questions? I have a couple. I will save the questions that I have for you about the beginning of your presentation for another time. Some interesting stuff there, you don't live quite a life, Mr. Raifert, you've got some time with us still. In operations, as with procurement, with some of these asks, do you think that these asks will adequately kind of hit some of the things that you guys see as needs for operations moving forward? With the increase in the work that we're doing across multiple buildings, do you think that this adequately reflects your need in the budget request that you guys submitted?
Yes, because, because actually, we've been playing catch-up for quite, quite a lot of years now. We didn't have a annual budget per se for all of our capital fund, so a lot of stuff is deferred. So we're trying to get back on, get back so we're updated, all of our schools are updated, and we don't have to do this again for another ten years.
That was going to be my follow-up, is that what do you project that spending would look like, knowing that we're trying to, like I said, play catch-up in a way with some of the things that we haven't done in a while? Do you think that then tapers down some of those costs that we will have to incur moving forward?
Yes, yes, I think our, our entire, our entire budget should be decreasing over, over the next five years. You should see those numbers starting to go down, because we, right now, we are doing a pretty good job of catching back up. So I would say probably five years, our budget should be going decreasing.
Okay. And then lastly, my last question, when we talk about custodial services and grounds and things like that, with our employees, what, what does that number look like on a day-to-day basis? On, do we have, see any issues with absenteeism? Do we see any issues there that we may have to address, or is everything moving smoothly in those operations?
So when the board approved the, us having subs back in-house, that greatly helped us for vacancies. So we're able to cover a lot of more vacancies now than we were in the past. So that was a great help by, by doing that, and we are keeping an eye on long-term absences and, and sick leave absences.
Okay, and then lastly, like with Ms. Allen, we talk about the need to try to move into being more proactive than reactive. What are some of the things that you guys are doing in operations to move into a more proactive space?
As far as custodians?
Custodial services, grounds, everything.
Yeah, so, so the board and treasurer has been gracious enough to approve some equipment. Some of our issues was outdated equipment, which was costing us a lot more time to do the job. So with this, with this new equipment, it cuts down time a whole lot with grounds and with, with grounds and with custodial. So I can get Rob up here. And he, and he could speak on some of the stuff he's doing proactive with grounds.
Good evening. As far as the grounds is concerned, some of the things that we're doing now is we're just be, we've set up more of a preventive maintenance type. As far as looking ahead, we were real, with all the equipment that we've purchased, that you all have approved, it has really helped us as far as getting out to the sites. Initially, we only had two individuals on riding moors with the purchase of all the equipment. Now we have four individuals in four sections that's able to take care of, so that's eight individuals out cutting. It's also allowed us to be able to, we were typically getting our, all of our schools cut in approximately about two weeks' time. Now we're able to get it cut in a week. So we're trying to stay on top of that, but also we've, we re-ordered some equipment to actually do a lot of fertilization, things of that nature. So all of that is kind of helping us get a little more proactive. But also, some of the equipment, we have a, we just hired, within the last couple of months, we had hired a preventive maintenance individual, so he's able to keep our equipment serviced in a timely manner and things of that nature, so, so that's what helps us as far as on the grounds is concerned.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening. On the custodial end of things, we are looking at newer updated equipment to help our staff be able to, to maneuver with cleaning a little bit easier. Some of our population is getting a little older, so some of these are, are more feasible, less backbreaking work, if you will. So that way, that helps them be a little bit more productive, so we have a decrease in people out for different slips, trips, falls, and whatnot. We're working on training for our staff. A couple of weeks ago, we sent our head custodians to a Southwest Ohio training seminar, where they had a chance to interact with custodians from other districts, and we are looking to improve on that. Upcoming for our newer staff, sub-custodians and custodians with a year or two less, we are partnering with Goodwill Easter Seals, and they will come to us and do a four-day training. In addition to that, we're heavy in a summer clean, where some of the newer staff has the opportunity to work with some of our veteran staff on different techniques, if you will, for cleaning in our schools.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I want to say thank you and your staff for all the work that you guys have been doing to make sure that these spaces are ready for us to have our board meetings as we go to the schools during the summer. So I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing to make sure that those things are taken care of as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Whit Gagné?
Yeah, just a, hello, I don't know, it's working, thank you. The building looks great, everything looks beautiful. It is really wonderful to invite our community out to these buildings and to see the space, and thank you for your hard work and dedication. What happened to the four hundred and fifty-five work orders that didn't get processed? That's a lot of work orders to process in a short period of time, so kudos, great job, team, really wonderful, thank you. I was being kind of, that was kind of funny, but I thought those were some big numbers. That's a lot of work orders to process throughout the course of one year in an organization, so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lawrence had asked me to speak on Board Member Sampson's question about the BAS. We still, there are four major schools that stand out, Thurgood Marshall, WOW, the International School, Charity Adams, and also Ruskin. Those are some of the four most troubled schools we have standing right now. A lot of them have to do with mechanical issues, just old technology that was put in that causes leaks and, and chillers to go down and boilers to go down, so that's some of our biggest issues.
What were those schools again, please?
Thurgood Marshall, Charity Adams, Ruskin, and the International School.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I think we're done, appreciate you there, Mr. Rayford.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on now, do we have any bargaining units present to speak? I see none. Next, moving on to hearing of the public, Madam Treasurer, do we have any members registered to speak?
Yes, we do.
Okay, well, before we do that, as always, I'd like to let you know to please, when you're called upon, identify yourself, state your name and address. If you need an interpreter, then you would have time to extend it. If you have an interpreter as well, address the board as a whole. If you have any materials for distribution to the board, please hand them to the treasurer. And if you can, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Madam Treasurer, who do we have registered to speak?
Jamika Hood.
Jamika Hood?
Yes.
Hello, good evening, my name is Jamika Hood. My address is one-one-zero Marsen Drive, Dayton, Ohio, four-five-four oh five. Is that all you requested? Okay. I'm here to speak about issues with my son. I have tried to speak with teachers, advisors, principals, also chief of education, secondary education, but I was told that if I'm not with also including the Office of Perceptional Children, if I'm not getting anywhere to come and speak with the Board of Education, and that's what I'm here to do today. My son is lacking academic success opponents. It's because he has not received what he needs in his classrooms, which I am asking help to make sure he can get the resources he needs for his 504 plan that I've had to go through a lot to get, hire attorneys, because I was being ignored, having my request for special education services denied multiple times without even evaluation being done on my son, which he has had a previous IEP for seven years, which I wanted to regain but wasn't able to. And in the process of me trying to regain his special education services, I've been retaliated against, me and my son, opponents, regarding my complaints that I have announced to the principals and to the teachers and to the chief of secondary education. I've gotten nowhere. I've been followed around the school building during parent-teacher conferences. My son has had an alleged application to be transferred out opponents to Miami Valley CTC without my acknowledgement, without my consent, and no investigation has been done in the process. My son is advisor, if I let her go on and be his advisor opponents, he will not graduate on time. He has taken credit recovery classes and haven't received any results in that in the last two years. He has been in summer school for two years, and he's failing, and no one can give me answers to why. I have been very cooperative, very communicative with every member I can think of, and you are my last resort, into getting some help for my son to stop having things happen because I am in that concern of my son's education, and to have proper advisory for my child while he's at opponents. Advisory is supposed to help students each year get through each academic trait that they have in life to get them to that point of graduation. My son does not have that. So I'm here to speak my voice and to ask for his classwork to be differentiated, because he's not understanding, he's not learning what he needs in the classroom, and to have the retaliation against me stop, the harassment stop, and to have better advisement for my child, so when he's ready to graduate, he can be prepared to be in this world as an adult, as a black boy, because there is many issues going on at opponents that need to be addressed, and you need to listen to us parents. Some and most are afraid to come up and speak, but I'm taking that first step to speak with you today and to help my son become a better student, opponents. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Hood. And Dr. Lawley, I would ask if you could make sure that Ms. Hood has a meeting set up with someone to go further into her situations, and definitely we want to look into the situations that she spoke on too, to make sure we can get to the bottom of those things that she said that were happening over opponents. Appreciate you coming out, Ms. Hood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Madam Treasurer?
Ms. Mario?
Good evening, Mario, forty Get Hard Street, Dayton, Ohio, four-five-four one oh. I am here today in my capacity as president of the League of Women Voters of the greater Dayton area to bring to the attention of the board and the listening community that we have a special election this August, August eighth. The League has always been committed to voter education, and we are committed to educating the community about the election in August. The one issue that is on the ballot, which will change how citizens are allowed to bring forward constitutional amendments and the success of constitutional amendments moving forward. To that end, I have given you a flyer about an event that we are holding on August, or excuse me, June twenty-seventh. It will be a conversation with former Governor Bob Taft and longtime Columbus Dispatch editor Michael Curtin on the pros and cons of this amendment, their positions on this amendment, and why it's important for people to go vote. As I was preparing for today, it occurred to me that there was a teacher at Meadowdale this past year, a government teacher, who did a fabulous job with his class on educating students about the importance of advocating for themselves, how to do the research, how to prepare, and actually took students to Columbus to advocate for changes in the transportation area, especially for Dayton Public Schools. If we, this is an issue that affects us old people, but truly affects the young people, because what happens in August will impact their positions or ability to effect change twenty years from now. And I remember myself at eighteen thinking, whatever. Now that I'm older, I realize that that impact could be really catastrophic. So my ask for you this evening is, if there is an avenue where we could talk to students that are potentially eligible to vote, we do devote a registration, as do many organizations in the city, but to give them an idea that, A, there is an election, and it is important that they participate, educate themselves, and make a decision, and even those students who are not of voting age to also be educated on the issue, because they talk to their parents, they talk to their aunts and uncles, they talk to, you know, friends down the street. It is important, it will, let me rephrase. In the last couple of months, it has been made apparent to me that there are a lot of people who don't even know there is an election. If there are avenues in your wider community circles where the League could perhaps have a table to pass out voter information, please consider us a source, because I think this is one of the most important issues coming up in the near future. Thank you for your time. Oh, and I have extra flyers for the audience if they would like to get a reminder for next week. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing that vital information. Anyone else, Madam Treasurer?
Those are the only ones.
Okay, now I did see someone come in earlier, and I would like to, if possible, extend invitation to any of our bargaining units if they wish to speak. If not, we shall move on. Thank you. Moving on to our superintendent recommendations, Dr. Lawley.
I'd like to recommend the approval of the Human Resources Agenda as listed. So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions? Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. At our review session last week, I pulled on this agenda number nineteen and number twenty, and we haven't had a discussion about it, so I'm curious to why they're back on this agenda when they were pulled by vote on last week.
They, I didn't realize that you wanted a discussion, I thought you wanted them off because they were not a new hire or a resignation.
No, I wanted them pulled for discussion. And so, Mr. Vice President, I would like to have items number nineteen and twenty pulled from vote for this evening as well until we have a discussion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Board Member Sampson, would you like to call for an executive session to discuss personnel at this point?
We have an executive session already scheduled for later, correct? And personnel is one of those items? Yeah, we can discuss it at executive session at the end, if that's okay.
I guess I would ask if we could do it now, if you wish to have a discussion about any personnel matters. Let me turn the question to superintendent, is there a timeframe that we are under in terms of getting these changes made tonight?
We can actually put them on the June thirtieth meeting, that, the special meeting. I, I didn't realize in executive session last week that we wanted to have a discussion about it. about it, or I would have had it there. I just thought it was because they were not new hires or resignations, so we can put them on the 30th after we discuss them tonight.
Any other questions?
Superintendent, did you just say we have a special meeting on the 30th?
It was my understanding. Treasurer, is there still a special meeting on the 30th that will be announced?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I was not informed of that special meeting as of yet.
If there are no other questions, may we have a vote on HR minus the two items that were pulled, requested to be pulled by Board Member Sampson?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiganey?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation?
Next recommendation is to approve the consultant contracts listed.
Okay, first, Mrs. Sampson, did you have a question?
I do. Before we move to contracts or consultants, I would like to make a motion to reconsider. Last week, I made a motion to remove on that agenda items number 173 through 177. After looking at that, those individuals were hired and started as June 5th. So with that action, these individuals would not, or should not, be receiving pay and/or working because those items were pulled. So I would like to make a motion to reconsider that motion to put them back before us today to vote for them to be approved for those positions that they were hired for.
So moved. One second. Could you repeat that, Mrs. Sampson? Dr. Lally says she's having a hard time hearing because of the feedback.
So last week, I made a motion to remove under Business Manager Appointments and Changes, items number 173 through 177. However, those individuals were hired, they have a start date of 6/5. Based on those actions last week, these individuals would not be getting paid if they're still working based on the Board's decision last week. So I am offering a motion of reconsideration to bring items 173 through 177 back to a vote this meeting because it has to be done. A motion to reconsider must be done the next business meeting.
Did you hear it, Dr. Lally? Okay. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and second. Any questions on the motion on the floor? If there are none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiganey?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
We have now had the motion to reconsider. Mr. Sampson?
So, Mr. Vice President, I would like to make a motion that items 173 through 177 be added back to HR Agenda for this business meeting so these individuals would not have any disruption in their employment.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who's the candidate?
Ms. Wiganey. It's been moved and properly second. Any questions on the new motion? If there are none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiganey?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. Motion passes. Dr. Lally, your next recommendation, please.
Next item, I recommend the consultant contracts be approved as listed.
I move to approve Superintendent Recommendation B. Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, there are two listed under here, Dr. Lally. Are we voting on the consultants or both that are under public content? Are we both?
The first one is the Kagan Professional Development one that you can vote on separately. The other one is a single source that include the Ed Directions and the Charlton and Charlton and Associates, so you can vote separately if you so choose.
Okay. Well, do we have any questions on the motion? Mrs. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Kagan Professional Development, can someone tell me what that Cooperative Learning Workshop consists of, please?
Can you say that again, Mr. Sampson?
Kagan Professional Development, can you, someone give me insight to what the Kagan Professional Development at Fairview?
It's Cooperative Learning Session where teachers are taught how to use cooperative learning techniques, group work, student group work. It's very much like we put together a small group and teach them how to work together. Kagan's been around for a long, long time. Spencer Kagan?
Thank you, Ms. Vice President.
Ms. Wiganey?
On the single source consultants piece, on the Ed Direction and the justification piece, only one source is capable of providing the supplies, services required because of the unique or highly specialized requirement. Can I understand more about that unique and highly specialized requirement that only one source is capable of providing?
For the Ed Directions, they are the consultants that are in-house for the last, going on, this is going on their third year. They've been working with six buildings. They send coaches in once a week to work with the teachers and to consult with the principals on building leadership data, that sort of thing. They are the single source to provide that kind of coaching, so that's why they're a single source. And Dr. Lawrence, would you like to explain the other one? Or it's basically because they, ours is because they offer the opportunity for single coaching. We also have two other companies that we had to get quotes from when we did single source for Ed Directions, but those did not provide the same services, so that's why they were single sourced.
Any other questions? Mrs. Sampson?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. I would request that we vote on these separately, and also when we get to the single source for questions, I mean, we've motioned already, so I would like to pull from single source Ed Direction.
Okay, so now this motion, amend this motion to vote on just the, the single consultant and not the sole source, the single source, correct?
Yes, I would like to vote on the consultant and single source consultant separately, so two different votes versus doing it as a consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. She shall do that. Are there any other questions? If there are no questions, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote on the first item, the consultant, the non, non-single source consultant?
President Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiganey?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. And now may I have a motion to vote on these single source consultants?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and second. Any questions or comments on this motion? Ms. Wiganey?
So we're removing the Ed Direction piece, or can we clarify exactly what we're voting on at this point?
This would be Mr. Sampson asked to remove the Ed Direction. All four of them, Mr. Sampson?
All four.
Okay. Now with that, then it would be just the Charlton and Charlton and Associates contract on here. Are there any other questions?
I have a question for our parliamentarian at this point. I know that we can pull an item from the HR Agenda without a vote, but is that the same for this consultant, the single source consultant? Or is that just an HR?
I think, I think this has just been your, the practice of the Board. I don't, I don't know that this is, I don't know that this is in, in Robert's Rules that you could, that one board member can pull an item that's been proposed. So I don't, I think it's, it's just Board, it's been Board practice, so I, I, I would ask what the Board practice has been. I don't.
Can I request that Board Member Sampson perhaps make a motion to table? I, I'm wondering what the intent is, if there will be a discussion, and if there's a concern that the board member has that we can discuss. Otherwise, I would like to either have the vote, yes, an up and down vote, or a vote for tabling.
Mr. President, if I may, Vice President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Board Member Reiner, last week, we talked about Ed Direction, and I learned along with other board members that Ed Direction doesn't have any data. They have been riding on the data of mostly DPS and what our initiatives have done. So in researching Ed Direction, and since 2016, 2017, we've spent almost $3 million in Ed Direction. And so for any organization that has no data that shows that what we're investing in, that it, we can't tell if there's any benefit to it, I feel as a board member that we need to pull it from this vote, and if we need to have a discussion later on, we absolutely can. I'm just not in good conscience willing to vote on something where we've used a lot of resources and there is no quantifiable data that shows the benefit of this large investment.
If I can, Mr. President, they were, they were hired as we were going into COVID. They were not hired in 2016. I arrived in 2016, and I did not hire them in 2016. They were hired as we went into COVID. They did an assessment on the six buildings, and then the contract was for three years, $3.2 million to provide coaching once a week to those six buildings. And the scores in four of those six buildings have improved. Two of those buildings have not, and we have not paid them for that work that they did in those two buildings at this point in time because the contract was if you don't see improvement, you don't pay for that. The principals have requested that they come in and continue to work with their teams based on the Title I stimulus grant, and we either need to say yes, they're coming in, or no, they're not coming in, so that we can tell them because this is for staff development for our staff in August. And to delay a vote on this, just if, either take it off and don't vote on it so I can tell the principals and they can rearrange their plans, or please vote on it tonight.
If I may, Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir, Mrs. Sampson?
So for the record, I would like to go, I'm looking at the expenses. It was 2021, so I did say 2016 in error. However, the amount of investment is still the same, and if there is no data that shows the expense, multiple millions of dollars with no data, I would like to pull it. And if you're saying, Dr. Lally, that it is, a vote is needed tonight, then I would go on record that I am going to be voting in the no. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
And the total contract was $3.2 million overall. These are extra expenses that would be there, so you are correct on that, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you, Mrs. Sampson. Thank you, Dr. Lally. Any other questions or comments?
So just for my clarification, since we are unclear about whether an item can just be pulled, is there a motion from Board Member Sampson?
My motion is to pull Ed Direction from the single source consultant.
So moved. Any second. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second. Are there any questions on Mr. Sampson's motion? If not, we are now voting to pull Ed Direction from the consultant list. Am I correct, Mr. Sampson?
Correct.
If there are no questions, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiganey?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
No.
Mr. Lacy?
No.
Three yeses, two no.
And that would be that the motion does not carry, and Ed Direction stays on this. So now, we would now need a motion to vote on single source contracts. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion? Mrs. Sampson?
You said this is with Ed Direction on it?
Yes. The vote we moved was to take, pull it off. If you would like, we could vote on it separately.
It was three to two.
Right. You would need four for a majority to take it for.
Got it.
Now, we could vote to vote separately if you would like to put that motion on the floor.
No, sir. I will. If four is needed for the majority, now does it include the number of people present or, because we have a quorum, correct?
Correct.
So are you still saying we need four for a vote to pass?
I will ask our parliamentarian. That would be correct. Is that right?
I believe it is correct.
Okay. All right. So we can just, I mean, if it's voting on this, then we can just leave it the way it is? If that is the motion that's on the table?
Yes. So are you saying you want to vote on single source consultants as a whole or vote on them separately?
Yeah, if we did not, the pool did not.
Well, that would have been to pull it completely off and not vote on it at all. Now, Mr. Samp, Mr., I almost forgot your name. Mr. Lacy, do we need a vote? We do not need a vote to vote on something separately, do we?
No, in practice, the Board, I don't think we've ever done.
Right. You don't need a vote to vote on something separately.
Okay, so you need, so you're asking me to give another motion?
You wouldn't, you just have to say you would like to vote on it separately. That is separate.
I, I would like to have Ed Direction voted on separately.
That is fine. So now, this motion that is current would be to vote on the Charlton and Charlton and Associates as a single source consultant, and then next we'll vote on Ed Direction consultants. Are there any questions on the motion? If there are none, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Vice President Smith?
Oh, Mr. Smith?
That is fine as well. Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiganey?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
It's five yeses. Now, there we have a motion to vote on the single source consultant Ed Direction contracts.
So moved.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second. Are there any questions on the motion? If there are no questions, may we have a vote, Madam Treasurer?
I have a question, actually. Are we voting on each Ed Direction contract separately?
No, all four.
That, that's five.
Is it five? Five. Five? All five. Any other questions? If not, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Ms. Wiegany?
No.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Three no, two yeses.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Your next recommendation, Dr. Lally?
I recommend the approval of Katrina Bailey be appointed as Principal of Dunbar High School effective July 1st, with a salary of $110,917.61, and that the treasurer be authorized to issue the contract and salary notice.
So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions on the motion? If there are none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Your next recommendation, Dr. Lally?
Next recommendation, to approve the contracts as listed.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Was that a second, Ms. Wiegany?
It was.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Do we have any questions on the motion? Give a moment if there are any other questions on the contracts. I think we had a lot of questions already asked last week. Mr. Sampson, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The bloom of Minnesota, the PA systems, do we have the list of schools that are going to be upgraded?
For the elementary, all of the schools will be upgraded. All elementaries, not middle schools for this one, but all elementaries.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mrs. Sampson. Are there any other questions? Dr. Lally, I know it was asked, was that last week, we talked about the, the systems of those? We talked about those. We're also having that done, the cafeteriums, correct?
Correct. We asked for the, um, actually, we asked for the gyms to be done at the elementaries. The cafeteriums, if the cost was not prohibitive. But the gyms, for sure. The middle school and high school quotes were for cafeteriums and the gyms for sound systems there. These are speaker sound systems for the teacher to wear while teaching. So cafeteriums, if possible, but mostly gym and other classrooms.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, is there any other questions? Oh, you're fine. If there are no other questions, may we have a vote?
President Smith? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. Your next recommendation, Dr. Lally?
Recommend that Nicole Davis be appointed as the Principal of Stivers High School effective July 1, 2023, at the salary of $116,352.95, and that the treasurer be authorized to issue the contract and salary notice.
So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Superintendent's recommendation E. Any questions? Seeing that there are none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. Your next recommendation, I see F is blank, correct? Dr. Lally?
Uh, say again?
F. The next on our board docs. Well, maybe I might need to refresh my screen.
Yeah, if you refresh, F is blank.
Let me refresh my screen, okay.
Recommend that you approve my travel expenses for an AASA conference this summer.
Okay, I move to accept Superintendent's recommendation F, now that it is no longer blank on my screen. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions on the motion? I did have a couple of questions, Dr. Lally. And being that the information is an executive, if there's anything I should not ask or add over, then you could stop me at any moment, I guess. With the, the request, is it a request? Does that come out of, would it be in this budget year, next, it would be this budget year, correct?
Correct. That's the reason I'm, I'm asking the board to approve it for this budget year. Because the amounts that are listed there are from this budget year. Everything starts new August 1st.
Right. Okay, and what you are...
July 1st.
July 1st, right. Because we have, that's why we have a special meeting on the 30th. And I was listening to Mr. Lacy on that. Right. And so then my second question would be, are we voting for the full cost of the conference or whatever is left that was not paid for?
For the amount that was not left in my contract amount. So it's about, it's approximately $2,000 some dollars.
Okay. Now, secondly, I did have a ask, and it is kind of involved in this, but is there, with this being a conference, um, on, focused on equity, have there been any conversations to have anybody from our staff also attend with you?
Actually, Dr. Burton and Rachel Murdock are planning on attending. This is a conference on student-focused, future-focused education. So there are three parts to it. Future focus, student-centered education, and equity.
You said, I don't want to miss you, you said, so Dr. Burton and Murdoch are also?
Yeah, OEC and curriculum.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Sampson?
Um, two questions. First one is, um, is there... First question I have is, and somebody, please help me, why is this in executive content versus public content? I'm not sure I understand why it's this.
I, I just put it in there to explain why I was requesting, because I typically don't request to attend conferences. So I just put it in there for an explanation for you.
And then my second question is, if there is a component about equity, is there a reason why our Director of Equity would not be considered to attend versus Dr. Burton or Chief Murdoch?
Um, well, actually, I think the Lit E conference is still, this Lit E summer training is still going on, and she does attend equity conferences that she chooses.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you.
And I should probably say, this is not an equity conference. It's, it has equity as one of the components. It is a more of a student, future-focused and education conference. So lots of curriculum sessions, lots of future focus on what the future of work is for students as well.
One more question?
Yes, sir. So, Dr. Lally, what, what do you see as the benefit of us sending three representatives to this conference in June? School starts in August. What would be the benefit that you see in attending this conference?
Um, it is a national conference from the American Association of Superintendents, and there will be people that talk about what the future of education should look like, so the curriculum team can have information about how we should be structuring professional development. For me, as a leader of the district, it helps me support what work they need to do. And then the piece for Dr. Burton is the OEC piece for students with disabilities, making sure that we are doing the future work that, that they would need and require as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. With that, Dr. Lally, I would make a ask that if, if, um, you or your staff does go, if the board could be apprised of a report of the, what came out of this conference, and then the steps to implement the things learned at this conference within the next school year?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Wiegany?
Thank you. On the curriculum piece of the conference, I mean, is the curriculum specific to the curriculum that we have right now? Or is there a possibility that we might be looking at new and exciting and, you know, hopeful curriculum? I, because I'm not a fan of our curriculum right now, and I say that with, you know, respect, but I think there have to be better pieces out there. So is this conference perhaps inspiring in that regard? Or is it just kind, is it the same?
Actually, the, the one reason that I wanted to actually attend this is because I saw like a preview whenever I was in, um, at the AASA in February. And the future focus is about how we instruct differently for the future, and how we engage students so that it's not me standing there lecturing you, but how do I actually engage the students in thinking differently and in responding differently? That was the, so I, really curriculum-wise, we use the Ohio State curriculum. This is really about how do we deliver the curriculum for the future focus. And that's what was exciting to me about the conference is what should we be doing differently in our classrooms to deliver it? So much like what you're talking about, Ms. Wiegany.
Do you have a follow-up, Ms. Wiegany?
No, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? If there are no questions, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you.
Your next recommendation, Dr. Lally?
A resolution to approve the change of position title from analyst, uh, human resources to just analyst. So it's a more flexible title that can be used in a variety of departments. Uh, there's no change in the pay rate.
Move to accept Superintendent's recommendation G.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote? Oh, I'm so sorry, I spoke too soon. Mrs. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Dr. Lally, with this proposed change, um, from analyst, human resources to just analyst, is that going to be analyst as it is any analyst? Because we have currently three positions on our website that says analyst for IT. So are we changing from IT analyst to just analyst? Or is this just specific to HR?
We are changing the title analyst HR to analyst so that it would cover the IT analysts that are posted on the website.
Okay, help me with that.
Trying to make it a more flexible title, because right now it says analyst in HR. So that's the only position that it can be hired for.
So our three openings right now says IT analyst?
Right, because they work in the system. So after conversation with, um, Diana Figueroa, talked to different departments to see what they needed, and tried to figure that out and put that into, because it's all about technology, put it into that framework. So it would just be analyst, but it, it's in an IT position because they work inside the systems.
I think I got it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any other questions? May we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation?
I'd like to recommend the approval of the resolution for the temporary pay scale. And once again, temporary just means supplemental. So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It was moved in second. And do we have any questions on the motion? There are none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation, Dr. Lally?
Next recommendation is to use the funds from account number 2742, which is DPS Fund J Instructional Management System, to our treasurer's office so that she can pay for the cost of the Family Resource Coordinator that Mateel Foundation has been paying for, what that is paid for through this grant that's housed at the Dayton Foundation.
Move to accept Superintendent's recommendation I.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any questions? Seeing there are none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation, Dr. Lally?
Recommend the approval of the memorandum of understanding between Dayton Public Schools and Wright State University. And again, again, just to recap, this is a college support program for students at Thurgood and for students at Belmont. And Wright State will be paying, um, 18 hours of undergraduate tuition, summer orientation. They'll pay up to $100 in textbooks for the academic year. There'll be a university-issued laptop and backpack and a dedicated student success coach and career consultant when our students that go through this program actually graduate and go to Wright State University.
Move to accept Superintendent's recommendation J.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And do we have any questions? There are none, but I would ask, Dr. Lally, if we could regularly be updated on the progress of this program?
Uh, they're waiting on the memorandum. It's, the program is ready to go. They're just waiting for the memorandum, and then we'll start the process with our two buildings.
Right, right. I mean, as, as we move through the year, to make sure that we're making sure that the students and their families have everything they need to make sure that they're successful, to make sure that we're updated on the program.
I'm sorry, we've talked about what we'll do to advertise to the current year's program. And then also, as we talked about last week, what we need to do to have our fifth graders and sixth graders understanding what they need to do in order to keep their grades up and that sort of thing. I met with, um, Dr. Gale to talk about reinstituting that Destination College Program, Road to College Program that I, um, had requested back in, before COVID again, to get that up and started again and get things moving. So we have plans in place for that, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing there are none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation?
I'd like to recommend the approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Salvation Army Crock Center and Dayton Public Schools. So moved.
Second.
Who moved it?
Are there any, any questions on the memorandum of understanding? Mrs. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm not sure of, um, if it has a lot of weight, but on page four, um, under section four, number one, it says, "It is mutually understood and agreed by and between the parties that review and modification will take place each May with a final negotiation approved by June 9th." Today is June 20th, so I'm not sure what bearing this has on this[1773.98] Today is June 20th, so I'm not sure what bearing this has on this or if it needs to be changed. I just wanted to point that out.
He said that on page four, at the top of page four, "Review and modification will take place each May with the final negotiation approved by June 9, 2023." And he was asking that since we are now at June 20th, what is the status of this as it pertains to this MOU? Is that correct, Mrs. Sampson?
Yeah, I don't, like I'm saying, I don't know if we need to change that June 9th to another date because we have passed the June 9th according to this contract that we're voting on.
Do we need to change that June 9th to a different date?
We can work with the CROC Center and get that done. I believe that we just got this right before the last board meeting, so I don't think they had it finalized even at their own date that they had agreed upon.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? None, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
That concludes your recommendations, Dr. Lally?
That concludes my recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Treasurer?
I recommend the approval of the temporary certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2024 as reviewed last week.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do we have any questions? Well, I have a couple of questions. With this, my question is for the treasurer, what is the difference, since we do have to meet, we have to meet June 30th, correct? To close out the books? Is it possible that we could have this vote there? My rationale in saying that is that we're voting for this temporary, that we would be voting for these temporary measures today, and we still have had departments come up to make budget requests today? So I think that's a quick turnaround to hear requests from departments and then vote on this temporary, these temporary budget items. What would be the difference of doing that the 30th rather than today?
The 30th is a closeout.
Right.
This one is for next year. We have to start putting the items, the temporary items, so the departments can do the work. They can, they start their work given the budgets. If we don't give them any budgets, they cannot do, they cannot start in July 1st.
So to follow up with that, if the budgets that are temporary in place aren't adequate to the ask, or if there are some things that we do not see, what would then, how would we then be able to rectify that before we would have to vote on a final budget in what, August, this fall, we would have voted on?
No, we can do an amendment anytime after July, in July or August. This is a temporary, we have to pass a temporary budget right now.
And the process with those amended budgets, each time we will have to, we then have to bring it in front of the board to vote to amend it, correct?
Yes.
If I may, Treasurer, can you speak into your microphone? I'm having a hard time hearing you all the way down here.
Just speaking to your microphone, you're having a hard time here.
Okay. Okay.
So this is a temporary budget.
Right.
It has to pass this week, today, so the departments can do work. But if we pass it in June 30th, when are they going to give whatever they need to do? They don't have a budget for next year. But the budget can be amended anytime you want to when we open the fiscal year.
Then my thought with that is, okay, we're at June 20th, so the work that they're would be doing starting July 1st has to be voted on today, even though we're still getting departments making budget requests today?
Departments, they did their requests.
Right, but I'm saying they're still presenting to us today as a board, and we're seeing those, and then turning around and asking on theirs, right? Because they can't spend next year's budget at all until July 1st, right?
They, they cannot spend it until July 1st.
Right, so if they can't spend it till July 1st, then it doesn't matter if we tell them what they'll have today, or if we tell them what they'll have 10 days from now?
Because if we don't give them the budget now, how are they going to start spending it?
Right, but they can't spend it yet anyway.
When are we going to load it to our system? It takes a process.
Right. So then my, my issue I do see is there are things that have not been reflected in this temporary budget, that then we would still have to then go, you're saying, we won't put it in, but then we'll have to go back and make amendments every time we want to change it before the final, correct?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Ahmet, were you about to say something?
Can I clarify on what Madam, oops. Okay, Madam Treasurer was saying, basically what happens is if you approve the budget today, and next week, the departments can open the purchase orders, so they can request the funds. If it doesn't get approved today, there's no money for departments to open purchase orders for next year, next week. So that's why we need it today. We need something so they can request at least, let's say, from July 1 through July 10th, because otherwise they'll have to start requesting July 3rd.
Okay.
So this is a placeholder budget anyway?
It is a placeholder budget, yeah.
Right. Right, and so then my concern is then also making sure that even though this is a placeholder, that we do not get in a position where the placeholder budget becomes the actual budget without making sure that all the issues that we need to have recognized by our budget are taken care of. So I'll, I'll talk to you.
Thank you.
All right.
If you don't want to pass it today, maybe you can request a special meeting for this week so we can have time.
I appreciate it. I like, I appreciate the conversation. It's always good to have those conversations. Any other questions? May we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation? Your next recommendation, Madam Treasurer?
Okay. I recommend the approval of the following temporary appropriation measure for fiscal year 2024 as reviewed last week.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of monthly financial report for May as reviewed by the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. Do we have any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following resolution, permission to advertise for formal solicitation.
Move to accept Treasurer's recommendation D. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do we have any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation?
I recommend approval of the following resolution, permission to utilize purchasing cooperatives.
Move to accept Treasurer's recommendation E. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? If there are none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following minutes, minutes for May 6, May 9, May 16, and May 22nd.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved in seconded. Do there any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following donations for June 2023.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Do we have any questions?
If I may, again, Treasurer, I'm still having a hard time hearing you. The HVAC system has just kicked on over my head. Can you please move the microphone closer to you so I can hear you a little bit better?
I am.
I recommend the approval of donations for 2023.
It was moved and seconded. Any questions? No questions. Want to thank everyone, as always, who don't choose to donate to our district. It is much appreciated. May we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following purchase requisitions as reviewed last week.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, are there any questions? Please take time as there are some extra purchase requisitions that was not, were not on last week. If anyone has any questions, we'll give a moment, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Dr. Lally, last week, I don't know if you were able to get an update, but did we ever get a list of the instruments that were being purchased for the summer camp from Howard and Taylor Music, I see is added, and also under $15,000 and less from J.W. Pepper and Son?
The instruments were for Thurgood Marshall. They were electronic keyboards, things like that. And Howard doesn't typically have a lot of choice on those, so that's why they went with Taylor. And then I didn't hear the last part of your question.
So the musical instruments for summer band camp, you said keyboards?
Yeah, they're, Thurgood apparently is going to be doing like a pit with some electronics added to it, and that's what that's for. It shouldn't actually say summer, it should say summer band camp. It's to get here for band camp for them for the fall season.
Okay. Thank you, and then I have another question. Dr. Lally, I see the new addition for Cengage Learning. And just for, for me, I don't know if anybody else has thought it. Originally, Residence Park International School was presented as a transition school. Has that idea changed, that is now going to change from a transition school to a full-fledged yearly school where these students are in this school all year round without going back to their home school?
No, they are going back to their schools. They have transitioned back. There are some students who arrived later who did not get a full year for the International School, but the majority of students at that building, other than the neighborhood students who are Montessori now this coming school year, will be new students.
Okay, and can I ask one question, Dr. Lally? Is it possible, I don't know, between July and August before schools start, to get an update on what this year looked like in the International School, like enrollment, how many transitioned back to their buildings, things of that nature?
We actually have that number, but I don't have it in front of me. I can send that out to you or, or tell you that on June 30th. But I did ask for the number that we're transitioning back into the buildings and the number that we're staying and why they were staying.
Got it.
So we can do that. Now, the, the other children that are there, the neighborhood children are just, are there.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mrs. Sampson. Any other questions? I do, I do have a question, Dr. Lally. With the, with the Cengage Learning, the print and digital instructional materials, are, are those for our English learners or for the Montessori children?
I, I believe the Cengage is for the international students. The Montessori materials that you approved, I believe, a week or so ago are for the Montessori building. I can double-check that, though, and make sure.
Okay, and then with textbook warehouse, could you give more information about the library books for the district high schools? For textbook warehouse, can I have a little more information on the library books for the district high schools?
I will have to find that out because that's a new one that I don't have information on. So I'll have to find that was added, and I, I don't know. I'll have to find that out.
And that's out of ESER One, correct?
Say it again.
And that is, that is ESER funding, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. Next recommendation, Madam Treasurer?
I recommend the approval of the following then and now as reviewed last week.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. Does this include your recommendations, Madam Treasurer?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Mr. Business Manager, sir? Good evening.
Good evening. I recommend the approval of the EPC Cooperative School Bus Purchasing Program. It's a resolution. It needs your approval. It allows Southwest EPC to partner with us so that we can take bids for buses.
One second, Mr. Lawrence. Can everybody hear Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence, could you speak up just a, just a little more if you could possibly?
Absolutely. I recommend the approval of the EPC Cooperative School Bus Purchasing Program. It allows us to enter into a partnership with them so that we can get the lowest possible bids on the buses that we're purchasing with ESER funds.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions for the Business Manager's recommendation?
I have a question.
Yes.
Dr. Lawrence, the 2023 school, Clean School Bus Grant Program, the deadline is August 22nd, is this part of that at all? This is the grant program.
This is the, um, grant program, um, to fund the purchase of zero emission school buses, clean school buses, and zero emission charging infrastructure. Is that something that you're working with? Is this part of that? Is, is that something that's on your radar that you've been, um, working through?
Uh, we are aware of that grant, but this is separate. This came about, um, in our, um, I'm just saying, as we push to, um, find ways to, um, spend the ESSER dollars and transportation spacing for kids and buses were there, and we bought, as you and I have talked about, 140 or 50 buses at one time a few years ago. And that probably was not prudent, and so we decided that, um, we would get out in front of this while we still had ESSER dollars and begin to purchase buses in batches, um, of 20 to 25 to 30. So, uh, Terry Allen, who, um, was up here earlier, uh, put this together for us.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lawrence.
More than welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. Does this conclude your recommendations, Dr. Lawrence?
Uh, Vice President Smith, that concludes my recommendations.
Well, while you're here, so you don't have to make two trips, do you have any comments for new business, since that's where we're moving on our agenda?
Thanks. I appreciate you letting me go first. I usually have to wait to go last. Uh, I am really proud of the team that came up today. Um, I've spent, um, 28 years now, I guess, as of July 1st in education, of which the first 26 or so, uh, were on the academic side as a principal, multiple times, um, teacher, check, check, check. And so being able to hang out over here with the operations folks has been amazing. So a special shout-out to transportation, operations, nutrition services, skilled trades, all our project managers. Um, it's just fun to be in a place where, you know, our motto is get the work done and make it make sense. So, uh, I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All right. Now that we at, Mr. Lawrence, save him that walk. Uh, in new business, I recommend the approval of the following board member travel expense. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions on the motion?
If I may, there was a question about this last week that I'd like to give more information about. This is not the COSBA Annual Conference. This is the Federal Advocacy Conference that, um, I am the appointed delegate for this congressional district through the OSBA and through COSBA. Um, OSBA does pay my registration and conference fees for this. Um, so just to give the board some more information on this one.
Thank you. So you said they pay the registration and conference, and the board would just pay for what, room and board and travel? Thank you. Any questions? Did you have a question, Ms. Wiegany?
Yeah. Board Member Reynard, I know you are appointed by the OSBA. Is that something that, um, as we move forward and look at, and this has been a position that you've, um, been in for a significant amount of time? Is there any opportunity for any other board members to either be appointed or participate in any more deep or meaningful ways in that work? Or how you could perhaps, you know, then share some of these experiences that you have had with, um, through, with other board members? Sure. Every time I attend a conference, I mention it in the meeting afterwards, and I share some of the things that I've learned from it. Um, I have learned a great deal, um, through the professional development opportunities that I've had at conferences. Um, there have been some really great ones that I've encouraged board members to attend, particularly the Board Leadership Institute that is held annually in Columbus. Um, this is something that is appointed not through DPS but through the OSBA, and it was through the, the work over several years that I've done with OSBA, um, writing testimony, testifying at the, at the State House, being engaged with the lawmakers at the state and federal level. Um, OSBA really recognized the work that I've done and appointed me to the district because of that. Um, any board members across the state are welcome to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would, um, if we could, I don't, Sharice is always hiding today. Sharice here?
She's right here.
Oh, she's down there. Sharice, if you could, um, just send out to the board also the information on our board travel and, uh, budget, and just put those things out there so we know what is there for the board to use if they may choose. Yes, ma'am? Do you know where we are currently at for this year?
Gone.
Gone, right? It's all gone. Appreciate that. And so if we can get that so everyone can know and check calendars and get out there and, you know, see what is out there for your professional development and things that are there that we could come back and give reports to the board to help us as we move as a board, to share those information and things that we learn. Appreciate that. If there are no other questions, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. Ms. Reynard, new business, please?
Um, I have some updates about some of the state and federal legislation. I do not have a written out document, um, because things are liable to change drastically tomorrow. Um, I will quickly, um, before we go into the statewide news, give an update on some of the federal legislation. Um, education, um, advocacy groups are looking for a House-proposed Labor, Health, and Human Services and Education Bill that will most definitely not have any federal increases for education. Um, in fact, this year, we're looking at, if we get a, um, level funding, we will consider that a win, um, given the control of the House at this time. There are many months between now and when fiscal year 2024 spending will be resolved. So, um, if you have any connections to your federal legislators, I urge you to reach out and talk to them about the importance of not just, um, level funding for federal education efforts, but increasing those, um, as budget increases are, are usually almost always needed, as we've seen through some of our budget discussions. Um, the biggest update that I have, um, again, that will change drastically tomorrow, is House Bill 33, which is the biennial budget bill in the State House. Um, it passed on June 15th through the House, um, and it's scheduled to be voted tomorrow, June 21st at 2:00 PM, um, at the Senate. The Senate is expected to vote not to concur. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. The, the Senate passed the, um, their version of the budget bill on the 15th. It's scheduled to vote tomorrow, um, the 21st, and, um, it's expected to vote not to concur with the Senate changes. And at that point, um, the biennial budget bill, since, um, the, the vote not to concur is expected to happen, it will go into Conference Committee, which is composed of three members of each chamber to work out the differences between the two. There are a number of differences between the House bill and the Senate bill. Um, I could probably talk at length about those, um, but seeing as how things are up in the air and they'll change tomorrow, I don't want to confuse people. Needless to say, the House and the Senate do not see eye to eye on some of the, um, uh, education priorities. The biggest, um, levels, the biggest priorities of concern that I have are the universal, um, voucher bill that is in the Senate portion. Um, it is an immense budget item that will take very, very needed state funding dollars, um, public tax dollars, and put it into private entities. It is a huge expansion of the voucher program. Um, there was a bill, um, that was introduced earlier that has not advanced, um, and the, the priorities of that bill have basically been folded into the Senate bill. Again, there are lots of different, um, aspects of the bill. Um, I will update next month, um, with where the Conference Committee is on that, and that is all that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Reynard. Mr. Lacy?
On, uh, June 8th, the Finance Committee met and went over the, the, uh, the May financial statements and found them in good order. And, um, I just got back from vacation in New Jersey, and we were, we were fairly close to a school that was still in session. They all were, yeah. The buses were going around on, the yellow buses were, were traveling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Ms. Wiegany?
Thank you, um, Vice President Smith. Um, not a whole lot to report on. Uh, uh, the Welcome Fieldhouse, Welcome Stadium continues to move along beautifully. Looking forward to the golf first fundraising golf event we have scheduled for August 26th. Um, I think a lot of the board members or the community have gotten flyers. If not, I'll make sure that our team continues to send out the reminders. It's $125 per person to play golf, which is reasonable. It's going to be on a Saturday, and it should be a lot of fun and a lot of good community out there supporting our efforts to continue to, uh, drive energy towards this wonderful project. Uh, for the science, I encourage anybody to go out to the Liddy Science Camp this week to, or STEM Camp, to see the wonderful work that's going on with our, um, our educators out in the field there. Um, I would ask perhaps that maybe our PIO team, um, encourage our community to get out and vote the importance of the privilege of voting for the special election. There are a lot of important issues to everyone, and if we could use our media platform with our families to encourage them to vote, I would appreciate that. And otherwise, uh, thank you all for coming out. All the presentations were wonderful tonight, and appreciate you all. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Board Member Sampson, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Um, first thing I would like to ask, um, business-wise, Dr. Lally, do you know if we have an update on the conversation about coaches in retro? Or is it still in the works?
The, um, HR Department reviewed the Athletic Department's, uh, input and then, um, corrected anything that was, uh, in need. I sent that to the Treasurer, and the Treasurer requested, I, I sent the amount to the Treasurer. The Treasurer, Treasurer recommended the documentation that, uh, HR, um, reviewed. So that's, uh, uh, been sent to the Treasurer's office.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Vice President, uh, my report is a few things. Um, I said this last week, and I, I really mean it, and I don't think people, uh, believe me, but I enjoy being on the Finance Committee. Um, I, and this is not to make him feel good, but Mr. Lacy is a rock star. Um, I learn a lot by just sitting in that space with, uh, Mr. Lacy and the Treasurer and everyone that comes into that meeting. Uh, I'm learning a lot, and so I appreciate having the opportunity to serve in that capacity. Also, I want to say, um, shout-out to DPS, the parents, the community. Um, I had the opportunity last month, uh, to attend all but one graduations. Um, and when I say I enjoyed being able to sit as a family member, an uncle, um, a relative in all of the graduations, um, I enjoyed, um, the graduations. Um, I do want to give a special shout-out to our SROs. When I tell you we have top-class SROs, the way they interact with the community, um, engaging with the parents and other community members, I just want to shout them out. Um, I enjoyed, um, the liveliness of some graduations. Um, so I just wanted to say to all of our graduates, job well done. Um, and I want you to know that we are extremely proud of you all. Um, and to the parent, Ms. Hood, who came today, I want to take a moment to just ask, uh, the parents who view this, community members who view this, we appreciate your engagement. So if, um, I don't know if you noticed, but we, for the last two meetings, we've been in, um, our schools, and we are hoping that it will increase some community and parent participation. Um, we, I love, I'm sure I can speak for all of us, we love when we get the opportunity to hear from our parents, um, and those in the community. And then lastly, I want to say that my prayers and thoughts are to the Thurgood family. They had a loss this weekend of a rising sophomore, um, and I want to encourage our young people, please stay safe, parents. Um, make sure, um, that you know the whereabouts of your, your scholar, and please, please, please be safe out there, because I look forward to hearing about all of you coming back in August. So I just wanted my, uh, Thurgood family to know that my thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Madam Treasurer?
State funding. This, um, the annual state budget for 2024, 2025, uh, first draft, uh, passed by the Senate. And it shows a flat funded for '24 and '25 school year, which means no increase for us. So as you know, our expenses are increasing to educate our kids, but the budget passed, there is no increase. But I hope the final comes better, because the House, uh, passed was a bigger amount, about $7 million increase, but on the Senate, they cut it. So I'm hoping, uh, to change. The next one I have is the, the month, this month, we are closing our financials and reconciling. So the final payment for payroll is this Friday. After that, our system will shut off to reconcile the year end. That's it.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Dr. Lally?
Just wanted to express our condolences to the two families. Um, we have lost, um, students over the weekend, as Mr. Sampson said. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lally. Um, I don't know where to start, huh? Um, yeah, we got Joe, we got Joe, because Joe told us he was going, went to Jersey, his schools were in session. And if you did not know, Mr. Lacy runs everywhere he goes, and he tries to put me and Mr. Sampson to shame with his running posts. And so, just want to let you know, we see it, Mr. Lacy, and I am still not ready to take that challenge. Um, I guess I'll start there. I want to also send my condolences to our families. And to add to what Mr. Sampson said, and to be frank, our babies are in danger. And I hate to have to say that, because as I, ooh, I'm old now, I'm 40 now. High schoolers still, there are babies to me. These are our babies. Our high school principals look at these children sometimes the way that our elementary principals look at their children, and our middle school principals look at their children. They're our babies. And you can never put a value on a child's life. You can never put the words together to talk about it, and especially in the situations that we see all too often in our community, where some of these things are needless. That is what pains me, is when you have needless situations that happen in our community. And we have to do something about it. Um, we can sit and do the political, do something, say something thing, but no, we have to be, as a community, hold each other accountable and do something about it. These are our babies. This is another family, these are families that are grieving at something that is unimaginable to me. Um, so my heart goes out to their families, their loved ones, their school families and friends, because our children should not be this acquainted with seeing classmates die. They really shouldn't. They should not be so acquainted with going to funerals. I think I know high schoolers that have probably been to more funerals in the last three years than I have. That shouldn't be. And I think that sometimes there are so many things that happen that you can get lost in what goes on. We have had, since I've started here, far too many children leave us, and it pains me to say that. So I definitely want to, and we've had some meetings, uh, with the mayor and some other folk together, I think we need to really open that up. Sometimes when you have these conversations, you get to talking up here, and that's not where the conversations need to be. The conversations need to be out in these communities, and that's why I do like being at these schools. Um, so to move on from that, I will ask that we start having more things at our schools. So to move on from that, I will ask that we start having more things at our schools. And as I look around here, I really, really love having auditoriums, even though we've only got, I think, maybe two left in the district. So I'm so glad at the people who are on this board before me who thought, let's save this auditorium here, because you just don't have that. So like getting out in the community and like Mr. Sampson said, please, please come out and speak. If, and it can be daunting. It can be truly daunting to speak in front of us. And so whatever you need to do first, if you need to reach out, email us. You can find all of our emails online. You can find me on social media if you want to. Reach out, just reach out. One of the painful things that our parents can do is to suffer in silence and to think that this board does not want to hear what is going on. Reach out, please reach out. On another note, I want to send my sincere condolences to another member of our community that we lost, formerly worked with us in males of color, Meadowdale graduate, had the pleasure of knowing this man. He did so many things for the west side of Dayton and for our youth. This gentleman put together midnight basketball leagues to get kids off the street, worked over at the Urban League, worked at the Wesley Center, did everything he could to help get people off the streets and in the better situations. So to the family of Tony White, you have my condolences. Tony graduated, like I said, from Meadowdale High School and was just an amazing person. Even the, the day before he passed, he was holding a seminar and a community event to help young entrepreneurs in our community. So you will sorely be missed. I want to thank our P I O staff, and in particular, I want to say, anybody, if you have something, shoot it out to Ms. Kincaid. I, I sometimes think she's watching my emails because she's the only person, if I send her an email, by the time I put send, I have something back in my inbox two seconds later. So I appreciate that. So we have some good things coming out, talking about our Hall of Fame efforts that will be rolling out pretty soon. You'll be seeing some of that soon, so you'll be able to have that out there. If anybody drives by the stadium, it is beautiful now with a beautiful Dayton Public School lettering on the side of it. So I appreciate everybody who's been doing the work there. And I appreciate all our staff, everybody who is still working now, and I know I brought it up last week, and I will still push for this and seeing how can we find a way to better compensate some of our summer staff that we have that is doing the, the, the real important work. We don't talk about the work that goes on in our schools in the summer enough, but it takes work to get ready for the next school year, and I want to send that appreciation out. And then lastly, I do want to make a comment about Mr. Rick Rafer, as he came and spoke to us. When he spoke about himself and the things that he has done outside of here and in here, I want to let people know, we have so many people in this district that have lives, that they have lived and bring so much experience, whether it be from the military, other fields of life, things that they do outside of these DPS walls. And I want to thank him for just bringing that up, because sometimes we need to be reminded that our staff are people and that they bring their personalities and they bring what makes them them to the job. And so I want to say thank you, Mr. Rick Rafer, for bringing that up, because we do have so many people. And I would ask that maybe we even do something, Dr. Lally, about really trying to spotlight, I know we did a thing this year spotlighting what our staff does in the building, but really to highlight who our staff are as people. And I really think that could be a beautiful thing if we could work on something like that. I don't think I have anything else. Just rest up, take care of each other, be safe, love on each other, and do everything you need to do to make yourself ready for this next school year, because you will snap your fingers and we will be in school in August. It happens that quick. So pursuant to Section 121.22G2 of Ohio Revice Code, I move that this board go into executive session, and this meeting is being held to consider the appointment, employment, and dismissal of a public employee. I always have to scroll down. And to discuss specialized details of security arrangements. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do we have any questions? Not, may we have a vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wickany?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you, and we shall be excused into executive session.
The Dayton Public School District is a thriving school system, serving students from preschool through high school. With more than 12,000 students across 27 schools, parents can feel confident that their students will receive a high-quality education and graduate prepared for lifelong success. Here are 11 reasons you will love Dayton Public Schools. All DPS preschools are five-star rated by the Ohio Department of Education and are free for students. All first through third grade classrooms implement the district's successful double teaching model to increase academic achievement and close gaps. All fourth through sixth grade classrooms provide high dosage tutoring for